During this late show, the fourth state. You got line more than this newspaper. Four and a half.
And I wonder what sick is coming up.
Neuroplastic.
Yeah, there you go. I think I'm going to.
The, uh, the, uh.
You were wearing goggles or you actually have no place in your eyes.
Yeah, the implanting optic nerve.
Yeah. I hope I missed that one.
You don't see everybody sitting around.
Uh huh. Yeah. And that will truly be the power of the abode where anybody is.
It already is.
Yes, uh huh.
We just don't hear people anymore saying, guess where I'm calling you from?
Oh, you can pledge our allegiance.
Yes. Force enough, we can do the prayer and not do an opening meeting.
Alright.
Very pleased to meet you. To the light of the United States of America, and to the glory of our riches and saints, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You had it on after I learned. I hope dogs get on my tricks, yeah. That's my God.
Didn't end it. Is it your brief 15s?
When I learned it, yeah. Don't worry about that.
Found myself looking at the canyon plague and then finally realized.
So, all the April 12th, 2016 council meeting order, all council members present. Engineer Ryan, attorney Griggs, engineer Paulson. Uh, seeing no ordinary citizens in the audience, I believe we can pass by the citizen comments.
I want some extraordinary citizens. Never mind. I'm going to try.
Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda as printed?
Well, one thing to add is appointment of Alex Raybien. Sorry.
Raybien.
Raybien to approve hiring as full-time police officer.
Where should we put that?
Under new business.
D.
Business D.
Anything else? We have motion to adopt the agenda as an ending.
Remove.
Second. Tom Baber.
Aye.
Motion passed. Consent agenda, is there anything that should be removed for certain consideration? Or do we have a motion to adopt the consent agenda as printed? Um, the minutes from the board of equalization meeting. The members present is not correct.
Is that where Dan is?
Yeah.
Yes.
You weren't there, Fred. Fred was not here and it should be Doug hanging.
Can you say that again?
The minutes from the equalization meeting, Fred was not here.
Okay.
And it should be Doug hanging instead of Dan.
You say is your brother studying for you or what?
I don't care how you spell it as long as you do, you can use about a D U G if you want.
Doug.
The official minutes have not yet been signed, so they will be corrected before they are.
Right.
It's okay. So with that correction.
With that in mind, I would think a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second. On paper.
Aye.
Motion passed. So, we move on to presentations, public hearings, and Tom from Smith Schaefer. You have the, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, I am Tom Lunti from Smith Schaefer. We are the firm that performs the annual audit of the city of Kenyon. And we should have all received the financial statement and tonight I hand out a presentation that I intend to go through at this time. After turn to, look to this, this mark, yeah. Second slide, that points out that of course we are your independent auditors who perform an audit. The clean opinion, unmodified opinion precedes your financial statements which are in this document that you should receive in your council packets. I will go through many of the numbers that are included in that financial in this brief presentation. The entire financial statement was reviewed with a group that you see listed here, referred to as the finance committee or audit committee. There's no single audit required this year because you didn't have over 750,000 dollars of federal grant dollars. There are no legal compliance exceptions and the auditor's letter does include, as it always has, the limited number of personnel causing the segregation duties issue. So as we get into the numbers, beginning with revenues, charge of property taxes, you can see that darker color on the top here, the last couple of years as we have added the sewer levy. Property taxes have been up for many years, down for the first time this year. There's not a levy decrease, but rather less delinquents being collected in 15 and then in 14. So it's a little bit of a drop off in property tax collections. TIP, pretty flat, not much going on there as far as changes. Around 20,000 coming in annually. About LGA, as we know, in the last four years on the state of Minnesota with exactly the same amount of LGA, you see that from 2010 to 2013. A pretty significant increase last year of 50,000 to 516, and then back up 9,000 this year to 525,000. As the last bullet indicates, it will be up 3,000 in 2016. LGA represents 32% of your governmental revenues, whereas property taxes represent 40%. And that is also indicated in the next slide, as you see there, the property taxes in the lighter color there exceeding the LGA. You can see how close it got in 2010, but with the property tax increases that occurred here, property taxes clearly provide the majority or more of the support locally than local or LGA state hours. Moving on from governmental revenues, we get into governmental expenditures, beginning with the general governmental expenditures. Those are, as you see on the first bullet there, includes the items that are listed in the first bullet, referred to the general government. All expenditures up 14,000 this year, had been down through 2010, 11, and 12, and have been coming up since then to 321,000 this year. Public safety, increases in police salaries, health insurance, and work comp, the last couple of years have brought that public safety expenditure number up. You see the items that make up public safety expenditures listed there, 416,000. One thing to remember when you're dealing with public safety on the next slide, Mark, you see that there are revenues associated with this. The fire revenues are in the gold color there, made up of the items in the second bullet. There is police aid that comes in as well, so there is some offset in direct revenues generated by these activities in public safety. Public works, number was quite high in '12 and '15, of course we did all basic projects, that would show that in a different color. This year, actually down significantly in public works to 217,000 as we did less street maintenance in 2015 than in 2014. Sanitation, recycling stays about the same, you can see it collected 45,000, spent 43 there. That is one of your governmental expenditures. Culture and rec, increased there, there were more hours allocated to the park and rec area this year. And there are higher full chemical costs causing your culture and rec expenditures to increase by 30,000 to 267,000. One of the larger categories in culture and rec is a library, which you can see here increases the last couple of years after being down in 2013. Your library expenditures have gone up, they're up 11,000 this year to 157,000. And the third bullet shows those are supported by both property taxes and town aid. Economic development made up primarily of the tip pass-through and the EDA cost, down slightly to 33,000 this year. And as you look at your governmental expenditures in total, as they are compared in slide 17, you see that public safety is the major expenditure, followed by general government and culture and rec. Let's get into budget versus actual comparison, how do we do there this year? The darker color here is budget, lighter color is actual. You can see the budget exceeds actual in every case other than the public safety, we're over budget 6,800 dollars. And we're also slightly over budget in culture and rec. As far as the general fund in total, we were, general fund was under budget 25,000 by the six. Other funds, fire and library were over budget, you can see in the bullets, the amount shown there, 3,900 to 2,600. As far as reserves go, we'll start with the general fund. And general fund, of course, as you know, we compare the general fund budget, which is the blue color here, to what you spend in a year to get a feel for how much is in reserve as a percentage of what you spend in a year. That is a pretty dramatic slide there, as you can see by the percentage you've shown in the second bullet. It was as low as 6% of expenditures in 2008 and it has come up every year since then. And we're talking about the same time that expenditures declined this year, as last street work was done. And so, and we're at 79%, so we've gone from a 6% reserve to a 79% reserve over the last seven or eight years. Pretty remarkable. Library fund is at a 32% reserve, there is 50,000 dollars in reserve there, operated at a $900 deficit this year. Fire fund basically operated at break even and has a 37,000 dollar reserve, pretty much an operating reserve. They do have capital dollars set aside separately, those are in the capital improvement fund and the third bullet indicates that they're 275,000. Economic development fund, another fund that has seen some growth in its reserve. Their reserve of around 50,000 back in '08 has now grown to just under 140,000. And 135,528 with a surplus of 8,700 dollars in 2015. Switch gears into outstanding indebtedness, there are five bonds outstanding at this point. Four in the capital lease, the first one was paid off on the 2003s. The red color indicates the current year and the preceding years to his left. And of course, the large one there is the 2013 PFA sewer. The new one on the far right is the fire truck capital lease. Next slide shows the securities coming up, really this shows what you will need to pay to service that debt. Slowly declining for the next five years, not much change. It does change in 2021, as the second bullet shows, the 2007s are paid off in 2021, so. Have we made this slide one more year, you would see a little more drop off. The, that pension liability is a new liability that's showing up just like your full accrual financial statement, primarily your enterprise fund. This is required by the government accounting standards board for government entities to record your share of any underfunding of a cost sharing pension arrangement that you may be in. Of course, you participate in PARA, which is a cost sharing, multiple employer plan. And PARA recorded to every governmental entity that participates, what their share of the underfunding was, and your share was 782,000 at the end of the year. And that was recorded in your financial statements. Capital outlay fund had grown to 703,000 this year, had down a little bit with the Ford truck, first grade project, and pool renovations are down to 601,000. It's still a sizable reserve available in your capital outlay fund. We'll wrap up with how we're doing in our enterprise funds, these funds are self-sustaining, they generate fees from users to pay for their operations. In each one of these, we'll go through a slide that begins with operations and they'll show gold revenue. And then the expenditures will be unbroken, or expenses are broken into two colors there. The dark blue is cash and the light blue is depreciation, which is non-cash. And then on the bottom, if you see yellow, that is other income or expense. And then the black is whether or not there's net income, what's happened to the income through the years. You see the water fund income has been shrinking, we've seen some drop off in usage. I think this is about the eighth city I've been to so far and the slides are identical, slight drop off in usage the last couple of years. Declining usage at the same time as we have increasing expenses, you can see that bottom line starting to shrink there. There's still an excess in your water fund. And as we go to the next slide, in each case, the expense and income will be followed by this slide, which is green is cash and gray is debt. So this shows then, despite that continual decrease in usage, you're able to build that cash balance and pay down debt on water funds. So, water fund is in pretty good shape despite the slight drop off in usage there. There's a 450,000 in cash, 200,000 outstanding indebtedness. Electric fund, same two slides we'll do here, beginning with revenues, you can see how flat those have been the last couple of years with no rate increase since 2013. This year, we're up 1% in revenue and purchase power, but your underlying expenses have increased in electric. So the black column you see there dropped a little bit this year, slightly lower income. I think this third bullet shows those numbers, 236 versus 274 last year. We get to a balance sheet then, on the next slide, where does that leave us? We're generating quite a bit of cash in electric fund, when there aren't major capital expenditure needs. When you look at the income that you have in electric fund, that's simply going to flow right into the cash balance. In the last three years, your cash has gone from 840,000 to a million, 812, up a million dollars in three years. I just shot it, a million dollars in three years. A very small portion of the 2012 general bond is recorded in the electric fund. Sewer, you can see the impact of that, using the sewer levy in '14. And that has kind of trued up our expenses this year, basically broke even. You have user fees and sewer levy coming in to cover not only your operating costs, but funding your depreciation. And again, you see the revenue decline there as the gold counts have gotten a little shorter the last couple of years following, of course, the water activity. Depreciation growing because of all the improvements that were made with the PFA loan bonds. Where does that leave the sewer fund as far as cash and debt? Of course, a tremendous amount of debt coming into the sewer fund in 2014, of the bonds that may service by not only the fees, but the sewer levy. And we're able to build that reserve back up, so debt coming down, reserve coming back up for a fund of that level of debt, that's in pretty good shape as well. Over a million dollars in cash now in the sewer fund. Storm sewer utility fund is a very small fund, as you can see the revenue there is just 40,000, a lot of depreciation, so generating cash to pay the storm sewer debt, which is 94,000. And again, on the next slide, Mark, you see there's a sizable amount of cash there, the debt being paid down. Finish up with the liquor fund. Liquor store continues to show a profit, there's eight straight years of income, which you can see on that black bars across the bottom. 32,866 dollars was reported before transfers this year. For the first year in, since 2012, there was a transfer out of the fund of its operating income. And, you know, bottom line is slightly higher expenses there, maybe before our non-operating income, but 32,000 dollars. When you look at slide 41, what this attempts to do is analyze just the gross profit. This excludes your operating expenses and just what you sell the product for and what you pay for. The sales are in blue and that peach color there, orange up here, I guess, is what you pay for. And then that, of course, generates that pretty far on the bottom. You can see there were some years there in the middle where the gross profit wasn't really moving much, even though sales were going up. Because on the right, you can see our 40% margins were dropping down to 34, 34, 33, and 32. But as we brought our margins back up and our sales, that gross margin number started to get to move well past the 200,000 level. And of course, that allows us to cover more operating expenses and generate that 32,000 dollars profit. Where does that legal liquor fund? Well, improvements were made in 2012, there was more debt than cash. But with the operating income the last couple of years, we have been able to bring that debt down, which is basically an advance from the electric fund. That's paid down to 75,000 this year. And for the first time since 2011, there's no more cash in the electric fund than there is debt. And that is after paying that 20,000 dollar payment of tax to the general fund, so a pretty good story there as well. I'll wrap up by saying that some of the high points here, you're at 79% in your general fund balance. A pretty remarkable change from eight years ago. There's more of a reliance on local property taxes than LGA, it's important for you to understand. See the second bullet, 750 locally, 551 from the state. All your special revenue funds that have positive fund balance, are there any special revenue funds that are in the negative? EDA with the largest with the 135,000 on the balance. You have a capital outlay fund with a sizable amount of reserve, 601,000. Debt is shown in the fifth bullet, all the bonds are being paid on a family basis, no issues, no funds having any difficulty paying their debt. And then when we look at your enterprise funds, water, liquor, storms, they're all doing a very good job of generating the cash they need to not only pay their debt, but to reestablish reserves in almost every single case. They're all in great shape. I've made a lot of presentations and it looks usually at this point, you have to point out one of those enterprise funds that had an issue or two. That is not the case here. Even in light of the fact that there has been some decreased usage in water, you know, maybe that's a good thing. Conservation is causing that and it's not causing the problem in the fund. Liquor fund, we touched upon the fact that it generated 52,000, it's able to repay 11,800 in its advance and transfer 20,000 to the general fund. And of course, the adoption of it, he asked me to pick up your portion of his underfund. So I think it's in pretty nice shape, reserves are solid. Thanks to the fee and any correction in the financial. Any questions?
Just the liability for PARA, is that our portion for the whole liability of the state?
It's, it's basically what they had, is I don't have PARA's number, but let's say it's 4 billion. Everyone was allocated their part, a year less than maybe half a percent, something like that. In fact, the number's in the, in the financial percentage, so it's your part of their, your allocated percentage of the total underfunding.
So they're really underfunded?
Now there, I think the numbers we look at in our presentation, there's two different, your part of the police fund and the regular general employees fund. I think it was 78% funded, so 22% underfunded.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So with that being said, we can move on to engineering, update on First Street reconstruction project.
Mr. Mayor, can you, can you pack this one-page memo that we put together, a brief update on some milestones over the past month on the First Street project? First Street project, as you know, at the last council meeting, you awarded the contract. Since that meeting, contracts were prepared and distributed to the contractor. They completed their portion, returned to the city attorney. City attorney got comments back to us on that and we anticipate getting the contract completed, the execution of the contract completed within the next week. We had a pre-construction meeting with the contractor this afternoon here at city hall. Representatives from the city staff were here along with utility companies such as Gas Company and MediaCom and Frontier Communications. We discussed a lot of the issues and items to be taken care of with the project. We'll be holding a neighborhood meeting on the project, 6:00 PM next Monday. We'll invite the neighborhood in and we'll go through a lot of the information, I'll need to know all the types of activities, I'll see, anticipate, schedule, things of those nature. Once the neighborhood meeting is completed and assuming the contracts get executed, we'll then issue notice to proceed, which hopefully could take place as early as Tuesday morning. And then the contractor would like to start work then, shortly thereafter. He'd be doing some smaller activities next week, assuming everything falls into place. That would include grinding the surfacing of the existing street, turning it into a gravel surface, starting to put up some of his erosion control, doing some of the minor removals. And then he'd really started with the bulk of the excavation work the week of April 25th. And they don't anticipate any problem at all in meeting the completion dates, we talked about substantial completion by the end of July. And the final completion in time for rolls fast in August and they think they'll easily meet that deadline if not come in early on, on schedule. So everything's in pretty good shape on the First Street project. Be glad to answer any questions if you have any on the project.
Were the utility people all happy that being able to have their lines or whatever needs to be, are they all satisfied? Is there any kind of an issue there?
No, no, actually, there's no upgrades or replacements planned by any of the utilities such as the gas company or the cable or telephone. They've got some minor processes at the intersections, but once the surfacing is taken out the streets, they'll verify the depths of those and make sure they're not going to be in our way. But there are no significant conflicts on the project, we don't anticipate any delays from any work to be done on the private utilities at all.
The weather cooperates, it should go up early.
Correct, yep. Yep, the, part of the biggest piece of coordination we have to do is talk with those homeowners about, they have, I'm currently hooked up to the city sewer. And there won't be with this project, we'll just be stubbing out to their property and finding out, you know, making sure where they want that stuff to be located, which side of their lot. Getting, getting all that squared away before we start putting the rest of the land out. That's probably the biggest piece of coordination we do. And that'll start with the door knocking campaign probably the day after the neighborhood meeting next week.
So, update on the fire station project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, the other half of my one-page memo in the packet is the update on the fire station project for the past month. Two things I'd update you on, first is the plans and specifications. As you know, we had two design review meetings as we were preparing those plans and specifications. We've since had completed those and they have been submitted to the USDA architect for review. He's had them for a few weeks now and we're anticipating that we'll be getting comments anytime. Once he gets those comments back and go through any, addressing any comments he has and he signs off on those plans and specifications, we'll be scheduling a meeting with the. signs off on those plan specifications, we'll be scheduling a meeting with the full council to sit down and go through those plans, so that you understand that the plans will have the USDA architect approval at that point, and then the council can consider approving the plans as well, and then we can get them set up for potentially going up to bids once the rest of the USDA financing is lined up. Which brings me to the second update, which is the USDA funding application. Stage two of funding application is essentially complete, along with the major activities in stage three. The USDA scheduled a meeting with us last Tuesday. The mayor was present, and administrator and myself, we met with the USDA representative from Faribault, and they reviewed what they termed the letter of conditions, which outlines all the conditions under which the city is going to be borrowing money from USDA. Went through there, everything was right in line with what we anticipated, there were no major surprises. They had some forms that needed to be signed off on, one of which was a statement essentially saying the city understood the letters, agreed to the conditions, and wanted to continue with the process. So, all those forms were signed as needed, and the application was unpacked up the next morning and sent to the state USDA office for signatures by the necessary officials there. And from there, then it goes down to Kansas City. So, we're anticipating that, sorry, in Kansas City by now, we don't know if it's made there or not, but we anticipate that it has. So, at this point, we'll be waiting to hear back on the final outcome of their review of the application. But according to our representative from Faribault, everything is in good order, and they don't anticipate any problems with the review. So, those two pieces, now as we discussed before, need to come together for the contracting of the project. And at this point, we're guessing that we're probably looking at a bid date sometime in June. On the optimistic side, it might be early June, right around, you know, the first week. On the less optimistic side, it might be towards the end of June. So, it'll depend on how the USDA architect review gets completed, and then how the processing in Kansas City goes.
Getting more exciting every week. Closer and closer.
Well, we're making tangible processes, there's, we're making real milestones as each of these weeks go by, so that is, that is good news.
Any questions, comments? Well, thank you, Joe. Then we can move on to legal, and first item being the limited use agreement with Luis Alas. Get a pack of wagon back next month. And this is basically the same as it's been every year, they've been there. So, motion to approve would be in order. So moved. Will second that. On favor?
Aye.
Close? Good. Another sign of spring to look forward to. And the next item is another recurring non-issue, the renewal of the Endurements Club letter license. And, once again, a motion to approve would be in order.
I'd like to make that motion, but I'll set it up.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. This just says license period ending five thirty-one sixteen. There is a problem there.
Maybe they get it for a month and a half.
Good problem.
Perhaps we should amend that motion to be twenty-seventeen. Unless it was intended to only be a month and a half.
That's when the current license ends, that's the way they set it.
Should say current license period ending five thirty-one.
Okay.
Apparently, they don't have room for the current, so.
Renew, renewal of a license that ends on that date.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, okay.
So, we don't have any date for the new license to be ended, huh?
New license takes effect six one.
Does it say somewhere where it's only for a year?
Uh, that's, that's how licenses are.
They are annual.
Yeah, it's an annual license. It doesn't say no. They probably shouldn't say term, six one sixteen to five thirty-one seventeen, but.
Yeah.
It might say that on the license that you guys sign.
Great, it does not say anything about. Well, there's notes in minutes that has been discussed.
Yeah, it says annual license, that's how we issue it.
Yeah, right, but on this sheet, it doesn't specify. Correct. So, move on to old business. Lee, you have comments about parking situation?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I've not been able to do a follow-up on this lately. One of the things that I mentioned before is not having handicap parking stalls on Second Street. So, my suggestion, and again, I'm not an engineer, I don't know if this would be allowed or not, but maybe have one on each side of the crosswalk. So, maybe one by Mr. Taggi's business, maybe one by where Papa's restaurant was, or where the whole plate, or whatever you want to call it. They kind of started this, I know the business owner, it's spoken to before, that some concern, just thinking maybe you want to see the citizen parking. If you can, then let them park there, do it, not kind of an on your honor thing, but that can maybe be addressed at a later point. But I was kind of focusing on not having any handicap parking. And I just thought it'd be convenient to have where the crosswalk is, because if you have a chair or scooter or something, you can get by right where there's a curb.
Yes, I totally agree on that. Also, I had to thought, and once again, parking is limited, but I have had to thought that one handicap spot here to service City Hall and the police station.
That'd be good too, yep. The only spot he had, and it's pretty worn out, is in our public blocks next to the Old Angels building. That spot's pretty worn out, I don't even think, you can even see it except the mark around the lane anymore, so. But yeah, that would be very easy to manage.
There is room in the parking lot that non-handicap could use and designate one out here.
Absolutely, yeah. I should know if you were thinking about that one as well, but yes, I'd certainly like to see one here in front of City Hall or the police department somewhere, and then maybe a couple.
And that would service the library, City Hall, and the police department, which are places that everyone needs to be able to access.
Yeah. There's one by the post office, so they've gotten down that area already, ten one, Forest.
Which, yes, needs to be freshened up.
Yeah. But there's no other ones down there, so that was just a suggestion, like some of the work we did.
Otherwise, I really have a problem putting restriction, putting more restrictions on parking, because as I said, we do have limited parking, and we also have limited staff that could potentially enforce it, and if it's not done consistently.
Yeah, you know, it's my feelings.
And it's a big problem.
Yep. But I would like to see some.
Unless, unless, unless you guys all want to kick in to defray the cost of parking meters, uh.
I would like to see some some handicap parking, if that is possible.
I agree.
I think it's, it's.
I do have a question on the handicap parking right out here in front of City Hall or in that area. Is it wheelchair accessible from that particular point? That's the only question I have. They either have to go down by the ambulance building or up here by subway, and that is one of the questions I'm thinking about. There is handicap down in the city parking lot down there, that could be updated to make it available. I think mainly what we're looking for is wheelchair-bound people with it. And, yeah, for myself, I see both sides of Main Street being taken care of with the handicap. I'd also like to see, look into the fact of maybe marking the stalls somehow, if that can be done, and seeing what kind of expense it would be.
Yeah, I'm not sure when we plan on repainting on Second Street, if that's a yearly thing or a couple of years, but that could use some de-striping too. Because I know one of the concerns we had was when people park, sometimes the lines are faded and they take up a spot in the app. At least the Memphis person will take up a spot in the app, but it does get, they all get it soon as.
Now, remarking, the parking stall, that's pretty minor expense.
I don't know if that's on the schedule, I'm not sure, I'm not talking, I've not talked to Steve about that at all, so I'm not sure how we'd do that, but that's.
Mark, are you aware of when?
I'll talk to him, I don't know the last time it was done. It's due, I'm pretty sure it's due this year.
When do you figure it'll be this week?
Probably not been done since the highway project.
Yeah, what, four years? Three, four years, so it's, it's due.
Yeah, probably four.
I thought maybe something handicap on either side. Again, I've spoken to the businesses on either side, I don't know if they would have an issue with that, but I do think it would be nice to have it. Again, having a son in a wheelchair would be very passionate about that. I'd like to see some maybe parking on Main Street somewhere.
I did speak to one individual, a business in town that more or less represents two, and that establishment, I was, I give permission to give the name, but at the time alone, don't see it necessary, but he did state that in the years that he's been in business here in town, has not had any kind of complaints whatsoever from body, from anybody stating that they can't find a parking spot, including handicap. And that was for two businesses within his building area. So, I really don't see it to be an issue. I have asked other ones, and it was just out in the general, ask people, and they didn't seem to think it was an issue. But they liked the idea of the handicap.
I recall when they established a handicap spot in front of the post office, and I think they also put one in, if you turn the corner right by the bank, that first.
That was taken out.
Yeah, but there used to be one.
Yeah, there used to be one, that is.
Those were, those two were put in at the same time, per request by an individual.
And I'm not sure why the one by the bank was taken out, or how that worked, but I know that one was removed for the post office one mistake. Now, we had nothing to do with removing that one, but I forget how that took place, because it was gone.
I think it probably went after the bank remodel. And I'm thinking that was part of, I'm thinking that was the highway department, that was part of the street project. Well, it wasn't on, it wasn't on the highway, it was on Forest. Yeah, but that sidewalk was redone as part of that.
So, that was my comment so far.
So, and no action needs to be taken at that point.
I just wanted to bring that to your attention, and that.
I think we're all basically in agreement here, but.
Sure, and I can do whatever you ask, or whatever, but I just wanted to bring that up. And while I'm standing here, did you want to talk about Alex as well, or do you want to wait?
That's the next item here, update on hiring process.
So, Alex Raven is sitting right here, and he has been offered a conditional job, he's accepted that, even after he hung out with us today and had a busy day, he still didn't leave. So, we'd like to move forward with this hiring process and get everyone as soon as we can, so we can get them in uniform. We're waiting to do a psychological yet, couple other minor things, but everything else is going well. So, background's done, and he's already secured our residents within our response time, so he's been doing his work as well, so.
That's very good, Tony.
Yeah. He's been a very, very, very nice person so far, so we're very lucky. And then if you haven't known that, Mike, Mike is one of our part-timers, who's picked up a lot of extra shifts for us.
Oh, yes. Can't beat the end of a couple of blocks of him without beating him.
Yeah, very, very personal, so very nice. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. So, move on to new business. Resolution twenty sixteen dash eleven, resolution in support of Minnesota broadband vision.
Uh, yeah, this is a statewide effort to get support for the continuation of, you know, broadband accessibility in rural areas of Minnesota. And basically, all cities and counties are being asked to support this, and the way we support it is by passing a resolution of support. So, you know, I would recommend that council adopt it, I think it's an important continuation. I mean, it's a process that can be ongoing probably permanently, but there's still areas of the state that are not, that don't have high-speed, high-speed DSL and other places that have, you know, under speed or slower speeds than probably, you know, that should have.
I know, I know people who still have dial-up internet, because that's the best they can get where they happen to be, have prices affordable.
So.
So, I would, I would make a motion that we approve Resolution twenty sixteen dash eleven.
I will second that.
On favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Approve Kenyon Senior Living's second annual five K fun run slash walk. I don't think anyone would have any issues with that, but if anyone has a comment or...
So, the, go ahead. Um, I did stop in there today quick, because part of the route is on First Street, and First Street is going to be torn up, so they want to use a little bit of Second Street. I did stop in today and speak to a social worker, and she was telling me that the Second Street portion that they would want is like a black lawn. We didn't get to finish our conversation, because then we had a hallway to go on, so I will continue to work with them, but, you know, I think it's a nice event, and we can certainly work out something. Our concern was that they wanted a lot of Second Street, and they had forty people last year. That's a lot of traffic direction, because it's not like it's over in five minutes, and people walk it, and people run it. Yes, there's the sidewalk and so forth, but we're trying to make sure no one's got hurt. So, we're still working with them on to figure out exactly what they'd like from us, but that's where we're at.
So, I think it's just going to be a matter of, probably a little bit of additional police assistance this year than normal.
Correct.
Other than that, I don't see a.
And we can use reserves, push our line here to help with traffic as well, so.
We could approve it with the proviso that the route may be adjusted from what's proposed here, but.
And extra security will be in place to help make sure we don't get hurt.
You and your department will work with them to ascertain the best, safest route, and.
Yep, absolutely.
I'll make a motion then to approve the senior, Kenyon Senior Living's second annual five K fun run and walk, with the approval of the chief.
I'll second that.
On favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Approve changes to administrative policy number twenty-four, garbage and recycling. And the changes basically consist of changing some dates, changing the rate which any citizen who happens to be watching will be glad to know is lower than it had been. And names, just small housekeeping changes, basically. Only, the only thing besides the rate, which would be of much importance to citizens, is interruptions of garbage service. No charge will be incurred for any going period if there's an absence of at least thirty consecutive days, a line has been added, that all interruptions in service must be approved in advance. So, anyone who's planning to take an extended vacation should notify us in advance, notify the city in advance, that you don't need to pick up garbage, you won't be there, and take that off the bill. I think that's thirty days. Is that not what I said, thirty? Is that not what I said, thirty consecutive days?
Advance, I thought you said.
No, notify in advance.
Okay.
It's not thirty days in advance. Thirty days, thirty consecutive days of absence.
Yeah, okay.
So, is there no more comments? Questions? A motion to approve would be in order. Slow move.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Motion is approved.
So Tom, not make that motion? Okay. Thank you.
So we move on to item D, our new patrol officer. What do we need? Have we worded this?
Just to approve the hire of Alex Raybine to full-time patrol officer of the police department.
Prove the conditional.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, every new hire, I mean, every new hire is conditional.
Right.
Objection.
So you need a, a motion that would be proper. We might mess up the name, but I make a motion that we accept Alex...
Raybine.
Raybine?
Yeah.
As our new prospective officer? Full-time?
Full-time police.
Upon approval of what, background check, is that what it is?
Yeah, finishing his background check, okay.
Or we messed that up? That's what was it?
I'll second that.
On favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We're golden.
You're in.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
After today.
The scary part is, I think you don't know what he's doing.
I'll have to fill out for tomorrow.
And our schedule of upcoming meetings, all we have is the May city council meeting on Tuesday, May tenth, seven PM, and Southeastern Minnesota League of Municipalities, and a meeting Wednesday, April twenty-seventh, in Eldon. Council staff, general comments?
Last meeting this month.
That, yes, that was referenced earlier, and I guess you're right.
I got some comments and concerns. Okay. Anyway, I had a lot of thoughts and things in my mind, especially after last month's work sessions, which was right before the March council meeting. I thought it best for me to write these things down, not only to remember them, but also to kind of keep my emotions in hold. And as you all know, sometimes my mouth was faster than my brain thinks. Now, we've all, we've all had a, we've all wanted a new fire hall. It's been a desired goal for many years. And the purchase of the four acres from the Folklife Company moved this goal closer to reality. We started out with a very practical rectangular precast concrete building. And as it progressed, I've expressed my concerns with this proposed design. I have spoken at work sessions, I've kind of been blown off. I've asked to meet with our engineer, Joe Ryan, I've nothing about my concerns, but the meeting was never set up. Activity meeting along with the department heads, engineers, and the architect, and council members that wanted to attend. Somehow I was failed to be notified of this important nuts-and-bulls meeting. As a result of that meeting, this meeting was the result of that meeting at our last work recession, excuse me, our last work session in March, we went over, that results of that meeting. And the kind of outline of the final plan. This is the fire hall. It's a place to, how was our fire trucks, to hold our meetings in practice. Who are we trying to impress? We started out with a very simple design. We had a very large, nice meeting room. All of a sudden, we got a kitchen right in the middle of it. Lot of hallways, three offices, storage rooms, three bathrooms, three, two water fountains, carpet, goes on and on. This is supposed to be a fire hall, period. And at that meeting, last work session, I questioned about the hot water service since the, things that needed hot water were kind of spread around. Well, the answer to the question was, the water heater with a pump running twenty-four seven to pump hot water to all these places that need hot water, that's, to me, that's very stupid. And then what's with all this curb gutters, green spaces, mulch, and mall-like parking stalls in the front of the building? We have winter here in Minnesota, we have snow and tennant, and it must be removed. This design is a, designed for a very costly maintenance. Three driveways, I don't understand. Because of this fancy expensive design in the front, in the south end of the building, we must bring a storm sewer up to take care of a water problem right in the very front of the building. Rule number one, water runs downhill. Kind of forgot about that, I guess. A storm drain system, I don't, I guess I don't quite understand that, why we have to have such a fancy storm drain system. John here lives right in the very top of Southern Heights, he probably has a lot of nice houses in town.
He goes through my house.
Okay. Rainwater that falls up at his house, or the Folklife property, rainwater that falls in his house runs across how many lawns, how many driveways, how many asphalt driveways, how many gravel driveways, how many gardens, whatever, it goes right into the Zumbro River. But we got to have this elaborate storm drain, a wet storm drain, cooling system, I guess that's another story, though I guess I don't understand. This design and plan is an embarrassment, and it wastes a lot of taxpayer dollars. I want to be said that we have a fantastic fire department. Anyone who had cause to use our first responders, and we have used it in our family, has nothing but praise for these guys, they're fantastic. So then the question is, why am I doing this? It's not to stop the fire hall movement, it's just to get the train on the track heading in the right direction. Why am I doing this? Certainly not to gain friends. I feel I've let the citizens down, I've let myself down. I guess I could have just let things slide as they are. But I'm just plain tired of beating myself up for not standing up for the voters who voted us in, we represent them. I'm only one person, these are some of my thoughts concerned. We are wasting lots of tax dollars trying to impress I don't know who. Maybe I'm wrong in my thinking what the taxpayers want. I don't think so by what they've said to me. Finally, mayor and councilmen, you represent the taxpayers and citizens of Canyon, and these are the only people that are committed to pay for this fire hall. It's been said more than once that our taxes won't go up. So then I say, please give us a little bit of credit. And I'm sure you're thinking, where were these citizens when these public meetings were held? Well, I guess you know from past experience...